The committee of the whole is called back to order. We have returned from recess. Reminder to my colleagues, two rounds of questions. Members are allowed five minutes. Time does not include response. We will continue now and we will start off now with Senator Telo tightly, and then we will move to her left. Senator Telo, please.
Sujus Maas, Mr. Chair, and good afternoon, everyone. Good afternoon, Lester and Mr. Byrne. Good to see you. It's nice that you're able to be here for this budget hearing. Anyways, I just wanted to, ta-da, taun, you know, ta-da, taun. Okay, so anyways, you know, first, Lester, you mentioned earlier, and I'm glad to hear that the governor is doing this to help the hospital out. And you mentioned about $2 million that's being transferred to the hospital. That's really good news. Where is this money coming from? And is it using her transfer authority?
It's nice to see you too, Senator. As I mentioned earlier, the board of the hospital passed a resolution, and they have three classes of compensation for employees who are directly at risk. And the amount that we approved was $2.4 million in, it's actually a reimbursement because they already made the payments to their employees. So it's a reimbursement for exposure pay.
And this money is within the agency, is what you're saying?
It's a reimbursement from the CARES Act.
Oh, it's CARES Act funding, then. Okay, thank you. Thank you for that. It's good to know. Mr. Byrne, can you explain what a deficit is?
There are two definitions of deficit. One is where your accumulated funds are negative. And the other is where your liabilities exceed your assets.
Okay. And usually, the government of Guam, you know, usually goes into deficit when, you know, there's more money that's been appropriated than realized, correct?
I'm sorry, could you repeat that?
In other words, what's been appropriated in a fiscal year, if there's less money that's been realized, then usually it does go into a deficit because we can't meet those goals, correct?
Yeah, there are two conditions that could either cause or exacerbate a deficit. You're right, if you spend money that you haven't received, that would cause a deficit. Or if you under-realize what you expect to receive, that might cause a deficit.
You know, Mr. Byrne, earlier you were talking about how public health and that there are so many, actually, you mentioned, quote, "There are so many agencies that need funding," you know, but you know, we can't forget or we can't ignore the 30,000 individuals on this island who've lost their jobs as well. That's something that we need to consider here. You also mentioned that public health, when it came to this funding that's going to public health, it's for Medicaid. And that any of this money used, other than that, to assist the Department of Public Health and Social Services. Are you aware that Department of Public Health and Social Services just received $6.1 million in grant funding to provide for the employment of individuals for contact tracing, as well as individuals, as well as opening a new agency within the department to assist? Are you aware of this?
Yes. Senator, first of all, I don't forget about anybody, both inside and outside the government because my department has to pay both people inside and outside the government. So I will understand their needs. Yes, I was aware that they received $6.1 million from the government. It's a three-year grant, and I imagine the funds have to last for the duration of the grant.
Okay, that's good. And I'm glad you're not forgetting those as well. Appreciate that. You know, in August, you provided this legislature, this body, a snapshot of the CRE report. And in fact, I thank you because you provided that to us on August 10th, when it's not due until August 20th. So I really appreciate that. So considering that we're here today, do you have another snapshot of the CRE report for the month of August?
Mr. Carlson provided it, so I'll donate other to him.
The CRE that was provided shows a projected surplus in the general fund at the end of the fiscal year. Again, on page three, the number is $20,827,000. I don't have an update, but I don't believe that the number, the projected end balance has materially changed.
If I'm not mistaken, Lester, as a 10-month hole in the government of Guam, your snapshot actually provided your draft report, I guess I would call it your draft rather than snapshot, but you're the one that called it. Projected $29,507,937. And then when the CRE report came out in July, it actually came out to 28,438. So it was a difference, less, about $1,693,61. So because it was, you know, a different, and now you're doing a projection here, actually, you didn't even give me a projection. Do you really think that there's going to be an additional surplus from the month of For the month of August?
If you are referring to page one, then it's the actual collections for fiscal year 19 versus fiscal year 18. It's on page one. That compares fiscal year 20 with fiscal year 19. On page three, which is always the operative page, we give you a projection of the tracking. The projection, Senator, is $20,827,062. That's what we're projecting the general fund will collect because this takes into account July, doesn't have August and September. So the actuals that you were referring to are on page one. I'm referring to the tracking, how we think we're going to end out. That's on page three.
Okay, go ahead, Mr. Chair.
Standby. Are you guys looking at the CRE of July's? The only reason why, because my colleagues are all looking around and seeing, what document are you looking at? Which one are you guys referring to? Lester, maybe you can tell us what it is?
Mr. Chair, if we can just take a minute, because I don't have that document. I too have that same thing on my mind. Which document is he talking about? And if we can get that uploaded, I appreciate it so we can follow along.
Let's take a quick recess and get a copy of that so everybody can get a copy. All right? Thank you. We're on a recess. The whole is back in order. Senator Telo, please continue.
Thank you, Mr. Chair, for that little break there. So basically, what I was asking for is if the administration had another snapshot of August, is August CRE report, so that we can look at that too. But they said they didn't. I was happy the last time they were able to do it on the 10th of the month. So I just figured you might be able to do it for this budget bill. You know, I'll save the remaining of my questions for the second round, Mr. Chair, and allow my colleagues to speak. I thank you so much, and thank you, gentlemen.
All right, thank you. Senator Louise, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. And thank you, Lester and Mr. Byrne, for being here. You know, even if you don't say anything, we just like you to be here. You're very welcome. So HR 1865 changed our Medicaid match from 55 to 5545 to, you mentioned it was 8713. Actually, what I thought, yeah, 8317, right? That's what it is? Okay, okay. So I just wanted to clarify. So it is 83 federal and then 17 is our match, right? The bill increase, this bill increases Medicaid funding by a total of $43 million. I'm just going to read out the numbers. The $5,865,432 is from the general fund. And $37,150,473 is from Medicaid. Either Mr. Byrne or Mr. Carlson, can you explain if there is an effect the additional $43,015,95 will have on various taxes, like maybe the BPT or corporate income taxes paid by the Medicaid providers and individual income and withholding taxes paid by healthcare employees? And if so, what would this effect have?
Senator, if I may respond to that?
Sure, sure, Mr. Byrne.
It will have an effect. It's very hard to determine the actual effect because it depends upon the circumstance of the provider that we're paying it to. You know, it might be a small provider, in which case they don't pay BPT. It might be a large provider, in which case they do. Likewise, on corporate tax, assuming that it's a, the provider is a CQ, then they're taxed on their net profits, not on their revenues. So it will have a beneficial effect, but it's really hard to determine what that effect would be.
So we don't have any, like, certain percentages or anything like that, basically?
No, Senator.
Okay. But you did say it will have an effect?
Yes.
Okay, all right. I'm sorry.
A positive effect.
A positive effect, yes. Okay, okay. I guess I'll hold my other follow-up questions for the next round. Thank you very much. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Senator Munn. Senator Chalai, you do nothing? Senator Amanda, do you have any questions, ma'am?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Thank you, gentlemen, for being here. And OFB, thank you very much. It's nice to see you all one more time. And I appreciate the governor's bill to allow for us to better provide resources for public health, especially during this public health crisis, and maximize all of the federal resources we can. My biggest concern, however, in this version of the bill is the reprogramming of the $1 million of general fund revenue from the Guam Community College to the judiciary. And I understand that this funding will help prevent reduced work hours at the judiciary. However, I believe this may leave GCC with no other option than to tap into the GCC apprenticeship program money from the Manpower Development Fund to cover their operations. And I have no doubt that GCC will be able to stretch what they have in the budget and make things work. But I'm concerned because the additional money we appropriated from the Manpower Development Fund to GCC was done with the intention of providing an additional 200 to 250 people on island with the opportunity to train and skill up to help our economy recover and to get back to work. And GCC is obviously playing a very critical role in the economic recovery because we're faced with both a health crisis and an economic crisis now. And I want to make sure that GCC is able to continue to help our community and help these future students who want to help our workforce. So what reassurance can you give to us today if we keep this amendment to the original bill that we passed, that the GCC apprenticeship program will not be compromised? The funding from the Manpower Development Fund to the GCC apprenticeship program, that that funding won't be compromised and used for operations?
Actually, I believe the language of the bill allows for the MDF to be used for operations, for the passed bill. So there were two things that kind of drove this. Number one, when the body passed the amendment for the Manpower Development Fund, you added money to GCC, but you didn't move any general fund money out. So they're getting their full 70% allocation of the Manpower Development Fund and a general fund subsidy that was not there initially, or was there. But instead of saying, okay, since the body agreed to the amendment, therefore raising the amount in the Manpower Development Fund, then we thought that there might be a corresponding movement of the general fund money to somewhere else. So the judiciary is seeking to be able to kind of get back to the 19 level. So their total in 2019 was $30.6 million. It went up in 2020 to $32.1 million. The S bill that passed dropped it to $29.5 million. So the amendment would bring them up to $30.5 million, pretty much in line, actually a little less than their funding level in 2019. So that was the thinking behind that.
Okay, thank you for that answer, and I appreciate it. Of course, I want to see the judiciary continue to work and not experience any cut in hours for any of the judiciary employees. I think the number that we brought GCC up by with the Manpower Development Fund was just enough to meet their actual budget requests for 2021. And I do understand that, you know, we didn't move anything from the general fund, knowing that they still needed it for operations. So I guess I'm still a little concerned that, you know, they will have to use it for operations. Of course, we're allowing it in the budget if they need it, that flexibility. But we did make that amendment here on the floor with the intention of that money going directly to apprenticeship programs. So that is still my concern. And I do feel for the judiciary and every other agency that is experiencing a loss in this year's budget. And I understand that. I just, of course, registering my concern, but I appreciate the information.
Your concern is noted. Again, if we had everything for everybody, we certainly would be doing that. Thank you, Senator.
Any further questions? Senator Amanda?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I'll reserve my time for the next.
All right. Senator Parrish, do you have any questions, ma'am?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair. So this question is for Director Byrne. On August 11th, in the preliminary part of the budget talks, you presented a summarized balance sheet that showed a deficit reduction. And in it, it shows $12 million of cash. What is the status of that cash?
Senator, I think you mean there's a $12 million increase in cash between 2018 and 2019. That snapshot, if I may borrow the phrase, is of September 2019. And that cash is throughout the general fund. So it's not just the free cash available to spend. There's cash balances at DOE, there's cash balances at the judiciary, there's cash balances at the legislature. So the actual amount that was actually free cash, i.e. available for DOE to spend, was something like $7 million.
So that's what's currently available, $7 million in cash?
No, 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 Senator. That was the situation, that was the increase in cash between September 18 and September 19. That's a balance sheet, right? Cash balances increase and decrease every day, depending upon when cash comes in and when cash goes out. So today, it could be different from tomorrow.
Do we have an updated amount as of today?
As of today, not counting the federal funding that we got, it's round about, we've got round about $24 million in cash. Generally, you know, if you compute the number of days expenditure we have in cash, it's around 10 days. The recommended amount is 200 days.
So could we use that cash to pay for this, the needs of, you know, as the governor's budget outlines? Can that be separately appropriated to go to these specific funds?
You can't appropriate cash, Senator. You can only appropriate revenues. As I say, the cash goes up and down, and we still have two weeks of this year to go before we embark on fiscal year 2021. So I haven't booked all the liabilities that need to be booked for fiscal '20 yet.
So there's an alternate route, perhaps? You know, we can stick with this budget that the legislature passed, and depending on the outcome of whether we have a surplus? And it looks like you're saying we have $24 million at this point?
In cash?
In cash, right. So what we don't spend ends up, it could be potentially appropriated to these causes?
We need cash every day, Senator, just like you do. If you had nothing in your bank account, how would you pay the next bill that comes in? You have money in your bank account to pay the bills that come in, the payroll that we have to pay, the myriad of expenses that we have to pay. And it's always a balancing act, but if you deplete all your cash reserves, I think you're going to find that that's going to be a really difficult finance to manage.
Okay. The other question I have, perhaps, could be for OFB. So in the budget, you, at least in the budget, you had ensured that we were funding warm bodies. Can you go over what were the elements that you made sure that we were funding?
What we did, Senator, is, of course, we allocated based on the structure of how we deemed to appropriate for each department. First of all, we took all the warm bodies into account. We funded all those. Then we funded basically whatever contractual obligations were existing at the time that we were aware of. We funded utility costs. And we also, and office rent, if the department had any type of contractual obligation for office rent. Now, we funded those, the remaining four, aside from personnel, with whatever funds that was available, that was allotted to the agencies in the appropriation level once we determined the appropriation level. So whatever could be funded out of that balance is what we appropriated to the department.
Okay, thank you. And also, thank you for that response for OFB. Can you track what is not, what is available, you know, these two weeks left of the fourth quarter? You know, are we up at, you know, how much is left that hasn't been spent? Is there a way to track that?
Are you talking about what, the available balance of the appropriation?
Yes, that's correct.
I mean, there's a way you can look at it. I mean, you can go through the AS400, plug in a certain department, a whole department number, put in a date, and it supposedly is supposed to spit out whatever expenditures and encumbrances are recorded or posted in the account as of that date. You take that total amount, subtract it from the total allotment that's released for that particular period, and you should come up with an available balance. That's normally how it's determined. But if you wanted the actual amount, you may want to refer to the department administration. They have a more accurate account of what the expenditures are, basically, on a daily basis. All we, all we're purvey to is whatever's in the system, and we take that as verbatim.
The other thing, so yeah, I would like, if that's possible, Director Byrne, if you can provide, you know, updated amount that hasn't been spent or encumbered at this point?
I'm not clear, Senator, what hasn't been spent?
So, you know, we're going into the last leg of the fiscal year, and so we did appropriate, I believe it's $678,000,641,533 for fiscal year 2019 to 2020. And I just wanted to see if you have the latest as far as what has been encumbered and what potentially is left. You know, has there been savings during this COVID time, considering there was a shutdown or at least stay-at-home orders for government agencies where they didn't utilize utilities? They didn't, yeah, there perhaps was a savings in utilities. Do you have that information?
No, Senator. That's why we draw up the financial statements at a particular date, because on that date, we measure all the expenses that have been incurred but not yet paid. If you look in the AS400, yes, you'll see some encumbrances, but you won't see the, for instance, you know, the bill for the health insurance that ensures your health, that comes in monthly. We haven't got Septembers. So that's not something that we, that changes based upon the level of activity. Yes, there might be a few utilities that have been saved, but equally well, there have been some departments, like Homeland Security, that have been working more than the normal working day, and so one would expect their utility bill to increase.
In the budget talks, there was some testimony provided about the savings in electricity alone for three months, and it turns out to be 33% reduction. Are you aware of any other savings within the government-wide entities?
So that was Department of the DOE?
That's correct.
Yes. Well, the schools were closed down, but the allocation, the allotment that I sent to DOE didn't change because that's set forth in the budget. So, you know, it's good for them that they saved 33%, but it doesn't affect the general fund allotments. So I would be surprised. I'm not aware of anything of that dimension.
I'll reserve my questions for the next round. Thank you.
All right, thank you, Senator Parrish. Senator Moynihan, Jim?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, so our budget passed with 13 votes, and now we're coming back today, and we're supposed to be optimistic to increase that budget that 13 votes passed by $7 million. $2 million going to the corporate tax and $5 million for the employee withholding tax. So what's new since, about those two weeks since we passed? So what's new since about those two weeks since we passed, 13 of us passed that budget? I can think of a few things, and I'm wondering if I should still be optimistic to increase the budget. But one is that we've been in PCOR 1 again and again. And I think I would be more optimistic if we were not in PCOR 1. And then I've also seen a couple of peaceful protests from business owners, you know, the ones that provide the corporate tax that we want to increase by $2 million. They're protesting out there. And they also come with their employees, the ones that we want to increase the employee withholding tax by $5 million. I think we can do better. I think I can think more positively if we didn't have the need for that protest, but we do. A third thing I noticed since we passed the bill by 13 votes was this group called the Action PAC was organized to support the businesses, the businesses that pay the corporate tax and provides those jobs with for the employee withholding tax. They're looking out for the best interest to support our government by paying their taxes, but yet they're accused of being special interest. And they're in lockdown, and they can't really pay their taxes when they're in that situation. And there's still over 35,000 folks that have either reduced their hours or their jobs were terminated. So and just the recent WhatsApp, if any of you go to Chunky Cheese, they just announced that they're completely closed, but redeem your tickets while you still can. So we could do better if we didn't have to have that these organizations form. And then, Mr. Chairman, I enjoyed your announcements this morning on the radio program. We're questioning these special funds also and the shortfalls that we're seeing in these special funds. And I think that continues to change and go downhill. And we know that we had to back that up with the general funds. If we didn't have to, I think we could do better if we didn't have to. And then we know our CARES funding is going to end in December. That's just a little bit more than four months from now. So I don't know. I'm trying to look optimistic, like you're you're letting us know. So we can increase this, the expenditures or the budget by $7 million. And 750 of that would go, of course, to DOE, and 465,000 goes to DRT. But the biggest chunk goes of the $7 million is to Department of Public Health and Social Services. And I'm just wondering if if they're going to have the time also to spend that money to take care of that. I'm sure they have some ideas, but but look how much we've we've spent of the CARES Act so far, of that 117 million, about 25%, maybe a little bit more. But I appreciate the, you know, the Department of Public Health's chairman writing the letter to us as senators and explaining to us clearly, coming from the director after an interview, saying that the money, they can survive, they can do this with the budget that we passed with 13 votes. And in addition, with the 15%, if necessary, that comes out to 27 million if it was needed. But yet, you know, we still want to do this and be optimistic that the funds are available. So and then I see the OPA report, and I and I think some of my colleagues were referring to the surplus of revenue and understanding that we're being told it's being to pay down debt. And I think, Mr. Chairman, you were questioning this as well. Then show us where, who got paid, and show me the check that was written, and we're waiting for that. So I guess my question, Mr. Chairman, has started from the start, when one of my colleagues asked Mr. Guerrero here, does he stand by his his numbers that he presented to us? And Mr. Guerrero, after almost the last one speaking, just about, and you heard just different testimonies, and we've had the opportunity to hear DOE and BBMR with their presentation and all our my other colleagues questioning, has your opinion changed, sir? Do you still stand by your revenue projections?
Senator, you know, I, looking at everything that has transpired ever since we started this whole process, and, you know, I take into account everything that I know, everything that is told to me, everything, all the information that we gather to come up with, you know, a number that would that I think would be fairly representative of what this government is going to anticipate to collect. As of this date, the number for what we've estimated for the revenue for 2021, I still very much feel comfortable with those numbers today. There's nothing that has happened thus far that would have me really go back and reconsider my numbers. There's a lot of ifs that possibly could happen. But like we've always said since day one, there's a lot of unknowns out there. And until somebody comes up with an unknown that can at least substantiate any increases in these numbers to a point where we all agree that that number would be somewhat attainable, then I, you know, I'm more than willing to go back and revisit it and take a look at it, maybe have a second thought on it. But as of today, I still feel comfortable with with the number that OFB came out with on its revenues for 2021.
Thank you, Mr. Guerrero. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Moynihan. Madam Speaker, do you have any questions, ma'am?
Sisusmasi, Mr. Chair. Thank you for giving me the opportunity. As I look at this proposed budget coming down and as I look at what was passed by this body, I'm still kind of, my heart, trying to see where I where we could go to to help the frontliners that need the physical support. And I know that there have been attempts. And when I look at the overall budget on both sides, I know that it's less than a 1% difference. Am I right? And I'm sorry, I didn't hear that, Mr. Chair.
That's correct, ma'am.
Okay. So my question to you, Mr. Lester, is I had asked over the weekend, just trying to see what I could do to strike the balance or look at both bills and see where we could do or what I could personally do. I sent out some increase from different directors asking what the impact would be. And I also heard that, and I've been informed, that that a possibility of 80 positions would be cut from Department of Public Health and Social Services with the budget that was that that we had passed. That was one concern that was brought up, and that with GPD alone, I was informed that the police recruits that we hired would be unfunded. And so my question to you is, is can you tell us what positions exactly throughout the government of Guam is not funded in the bill that we have passed? And I'm looking at this because I'm looking at the proposed that has been given down to us, and I'm trying to see where else I could work with giving our frontline the resources as it relates to health, as it relates to education, and as it relates to safety. So if you can just help me out there, it would help me at heart. Because I know we all need, I mean, we keep saying we're going to come back, we can always come back. And I believe that with the $1.6 billion that should be circulating, I believe that those, the resources that are coming in, I believe that for 2021, we'll probably be all right. I can't speak for 2022, but I can speak for that. I mean, in my heart, just I'm only speaking for me. So maybe you can help me here.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. Going back to Senator Torres's comments this morning about the operational funding for public health. There will be a need to take a look at the federal overmatch requirements that is normally funded out of public health operational funds. We're talking about the senior citizen programs and our ability to ensure that all federal grants are maximized. That funding normally comes out of the operational fund. That's where we were looking to be able to get an increase. If we're going to be utilizing the overmatch for the maximization of grants, it's going to come at the cost of warm bodies. If you do some grants and some warm bodies, you're not going to maximize federal matching. You're going to still have some people who are currently working at the Department of Public Health adversely affected. The fire department is another example. Consistently, we're unable to to backfill recruits, lower-paid firefighter ones, and they incur a significant amount of overtime. The reduction in their funding is only going to basically get them to be at a disadvantage from day one. We have been trying for a long time to try to get the fire department's overtime under control. It's going to require more young blood to cover the shifts. They have a requirement for safety reasons of how many people should be responding to a call, and they need a minimum number of people on duty at every point in time to be able to properly ensure safe responses to a distress. And the budget doesn't actually fund them appropriately. So we're going to have issues there. So what we've been looking at trying to do is maximize more of the Medicaid program because of the match. There's $11 million at MIP. I don't think $11 million is going to be enough, but again, going back to Senator Shelton's question about, you know, funding, if we could, we would. But there's a balancing act that has to occur all the time. So with all due respect to the remarks made by the appointee to the Department of Public Health, I don't agree with his assessment. I do not agree with his assessment.
So you believe that that the positions of what I had just inquired about, that the possibility of not having having to let go, the 80 positions that would help with public health, would have to be cut?
There's going to have to be some either cognizant decision of whether or not we're maximizing senior programs, and it's primarily in the senior program area, and avail ourselves to federal monies to the extent, fullest extent possible. Or we're going to have to make a decision in some federal funds, but not all, and that's going to require some decision-making. And there's, you know, like, you take a look at the fire department, you look, you take a look at DOE, you look at DRT. In our estimation, with all due respect to, you know, Mr. Guerrero, we believe that these funding augmentations are necessary for basic services. We're not asking for anything that will take something away from somebody. We're just saying that, you know, DRT and DOE are very critical to operating the government of Guam, and would love to be able to have more money in the Medicaid local match simply because of the 8317 leveraging. And as was mentioned earlier by Senator Munya, the Medicaid providers, their clinics, they employ people. So when when there's a bill presented to us for services rendered, it's the the whole gamut associated with the service that 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 clinic or that provider extended to one of our residents. So yes, their billing is going to greatly assist in their operational costs, which means employee retention, which means prompt payments of supplies, prompt payments of utilities.
Thank you, Mr. Lester, Mr. Chair. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Welcome back for round two.
Senator Kelly, ma'am, do you have questions, ma'am?
Sisusmasi, Mr. Chair. Yes, I do have some questions, and, you know, I've been weighing these out as we've been going along. So I had asked Steve in one of our earlier budget sessions about fiscal policy, whether it's harder for agencies to deal with finding out that revenues are not as high as projected and making cuts later in the year after everything's been planned for, the year's been planned out, and the structure's been set in place, or whether it's easier to deal with finding out there are additional monies that can be allocated. Can you inform us of your position?
Let me just start out by saying this, you know, a budget plan basically is basically what it says, it's a plan. Normally, a budget plan is normally done anywhere from 12, 13, 14 months in advance, normally a one month before its actual implementation or execution. And in developing this plan, we do our best to kind of figure out what the requirements are, especially for the departments, to operate on a 12-month cycle. Normally, what do we do is go back and you look at the data, you look at the history, you look at the expenditure trends, and you calculate basically all what these departments are going to need to operate. Of course, in an ideal world, successfully with with everything, all the funds required, so they can meet all the goals, objectives, and mandates. But it's it's never been like that in the government of Guam, simply because you're controlled and you're limited by the number, I mean, by the amount of appropriations given given by the legislature. So what I would, what I've always lived on the principle is that you come up with a budget plan and you pass one. But during the execution of a budget plan, I've always told people, you know, it's always been my thought, that the best budget plan is a budget plan that you constantly change to meet your your needs and your demands. So what you what you come up with, say, 12 months before, as you start to implement, and like you said, you find out there's there's some needs that that are that weren't part of the budget plan, and there's some other needs that are not necessarily required anymore, and you make the adjustments. But the bottom line is that at least those just adjustments can be made within that same appropriation level and not requiring anything more. Anything less is always great, you're saving the government money. But anything more, it's going to take a little bit now, doing it not so much with the department but outside. And that's where, I guess, the governor gets involved. But basically, as you go along, you execute your plan during during the course of the year, you make those adjustments. And those adjustments, hopefully, you can do it within reason and within the appropriation level that you have. But there's nothing to say that you can't, you won't come up across something that it wasn't anticipated, or it was, it was, all of a sudden, you find out it's more, it costs more than what you anticipated. There's there's avenues that you can address on how to meet those 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 demands. And, you know, we've provided some of those in the budget, and hopefully, you know, those those provisions can be utilized to address those shortfalls or those needs. And then, you know, anything short of that, you know, there's always having to come back to the legislature, if that's the last resort, to maybe seek additional funding, if the provisions provided within the budget act are insufficient to address those shortfalls.
Well, you know, I remember some of our discussion for the budget last year and and some of our discussion this year. And there was a statement earlier, and I appreciate it because, you know, it's helping me weigh things out. Do we go for the less conservative? And we always have that ability, if there's that 3% change, to come back and readjust. But I do remember the statement being said that that fiscal realignment was one of the most painful, it was months-long, and you wouldn't wish it on your worst enemy. And so, you know, this this potential strategy of being optimistic, it seems that the only justification I've heard thus far is because we need it. is because we need it. But then having to go through what may be a very painful, months-long process that we wouldn't wish on our worst enemy, that's a lot to weigh out. And, you know, I was also thinking that if we come to this realization later rather than sooner, then instead of it being eased out over 12 months, which we've tried to do now, then it may be a hard crash for three months or six months or nine months when we get to whatever realization it is. So these are some of what I'm still weighing out. I do want to ask also, Steve, in my reading, is it unusual to allow for government to allow funds to not lapse?
If I understand the question correctly you're asking, is it, is it okay or is it allowable for the governor to have funds lapse? Is that your question?
Well, in this budget bill, we have at least 30 instances where we said that the funds shall carry over and not lapse. In my reading, in my research, I found out, especially with governments, that that's very common because there are many reasons why funds are not expended. Pandemics provide additional, additional reasons. Would you see that that's your assessment as well?
It could be, Senator. But, you know, to address your question about lapses, again, budgets are made 12 months in advance. They cover anything from personal costs, equipment, to travel, contractual supplies, miscellaneous categories. And that funds are actually appropriate for these expenses. During the execution of these, during the fiscal year, sometimes there's times that these events don't materialize. For example, we can, we can fund for five positions. Five positions can cost anywhere from $200,000. If for some odd reason, and you got to remember when we fund a position, we fund it for 12 months. If they don't turn in the Gigi ones in the beginning of October, and they turn it in in March, you can already tell, based on the appropriation level, that 50% of that appropriation is supposed to be lapsing because the position is vacant. So if you look at it from that standpoint, yes, you can say there's lapses generated in the agency simply because money that was appropriate for that expense is not being expended. So that's, that's one thing you can say. Same thing with equipment. We appropriate money based on the cost of equipment. So you don't necessarily need to get it in October because it's not going to make a difference in buying it in October versus buying it in July. But the whole point is that if you don't procure that equipment, whatever that appropriation cost for that equipment is considered, again, lapsing. So to answer your question, there is a possibility that lapses do generate. There is a very good possibility that every year lapses are realized. And unless, you know, these appropriations are spent accordingly in a timely manner, you will also, you will definitely get lapses at the end of the year. How much, again, is just depending on what it is that is being done, being expended, and what's not being expended. But to answer your question, yes, lapses are normally generated every year. And I won't say it's across the board. There are some departments that are, I won't say habitually, but just because the nature of their operation are not, don't lapse and end up negative. But there are some departments that consistently lapse every year, for whatever reason. And you can go into the system and look, and you'll see them. But, you know, we tend to look at those departments that lapse as doing, as being very vigilant, very cost-conscious, you know, trying to hold down expenses. And you pat them on the back, say, oh, good job. But then those that go beyond the appropriation, you know, you bring them in and says, you know, what are you guys doing? How come you, once again, you've exceeded your appropriation? But then again, that's the nature of the operation. And every department in government of Guam is different. Their needs are different, their requirements are different. And especially their appropriation at the beginning of the year makes a big difference. But, you know, when we appropriate, we appropriate based, hopefully, on need. And we try to, and we try to appropriate to cover whatever expenses we feel that, you know, is warranted.
Sutus Massey for providing that overview of lapses and them being common. And especially in this situation, it's very, very understandable. We heard in our budget hearings the difficulty of hiring and just carrying out everyday work. There was discussion about the carryovers that we placed in the budget. How many of those carryovers so that it will not lapse? How many of those have been removed in this, the governor's budget?
Can you ask that question against, Senator? I'm not quite too sure.
As long as they don't count it against my time. So there was, there was a press release saying that there was an issue with us not, with us not having funds lapse 30 times, but having them carry over instead. So I was asking, how many of those were removed since it was said that that was bad math, magic beans, and fairy dust?
Senator, to answer your question, none. But again-
So in the governor's bill, all of those are still there. Thank you. I also had a question about the deficit. So 35.6 million is said to have been paid for the deficit. 21 of this is supposed to be because of fiscal prudency. Can you break down where this came from? How much of this was surplus? And how much of this was fiscal prudency? Either DOA or BBMR?
How much was excessive revenues? Well, as you know, revenues, you've got to be careful what you're comparing here because revenues exceeded the estimate by 25 or 24 million. But that doesn't mean that revenues exceeded expenditures by 24 million. So it was, so really, there were no excessive revenues. It was savings that produced, I think, I think the savings were 31 million and the surplus was 35 million.
Can you repeat the last part? Yeah, can you repeat the last part?
The savings, the reduction in expenditures was 31 million roughly, in round numbers. And the surplus was 35 million.
Okay, so how do you explain? It seems that 35.6 million was used to pay down the deficit. So this was a combination of those things? I'm just trying to understand all those figures.
Yeah, it's always a combination of things. Let me try and explain it this way. I'll try, try to make it simple with simple numbers, right? At the beginning of the year, you have outstanding invoices of 200,000. You have no cash, right? You have no assets. So you just, so that 200,000 is your accumulated deficit. During the year, you pay, you get bills coming through, right? So you get bills and you pay 2.05 million. So at the end of the year, you've reduced your outstanding bills by 50,000. But what you've actually done, of course, is pay the bills, the oldest bill first. So your 50,000 consists of the latest bills that you've actually received. So you've reduced the deficit, but there's been a whole lot of, a whole lot of activity gone into booking and paying those bills. And so that's basically what happened here. We paid off more bills than we received. Some of those bills arose before the beginning of the year. Some of those bills arose during the year. But at the end of the, I think, I think the governor announced that, you know, we're roughly 45 days with our outstanding bill. So we must have paid more bills than we received. And that's, that's the basis of reducing a deficit.
The other part that I'm trying to understand was in last year's budget bill, there was the $10 million that was supposed to go to the hospital. So it seems that people have gone around that a lot. How is it that that $10 million wasn't paid?
Senator Kelly, that'll be your last question, okay? And then we'll go to the next round. Thank you.
The law requires us to pay down the deficit first. The remaining deficit is still 47, over 47 million. So we've still got some work to do to eliminate that deficit even before we try and accumulate a surplus. This budget, as I think I said before, is, is based on the, on the assumption that what comes in goes out. So if everything, if everything turns out to the dollar as set forth in this budget, we'll still have a $47 million deficit at the end of next year.
So I guess I'm looking for what language would have carried out our intentions then. But I'll continue to think on that. Sutus Massey, Mr. Chair. I'll save the rest of my questions for the next round.
Thank you. Senator Reese?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I thought there was excellent questions by my colleague. Mr. Byrne, so in regards to the 10 million, you said the law requires you to pay out everything else before that law that was also passed mandating that you pay the 10 million to the hospital. We haven't seen one. Do you have a legal opinion in that regard?
We've sent it to you a couple of times.
The legal opinion?
Yes, I believe so. Wouldn't come from me because I'm not a legal person. I'm an accounting person, and I'm trying to explain this in an accounting fashion.
Well, I haven't seen any legal opinion that says to disregard one law for another. In fact, the opinions I've seen say laws that are later in time pretty much supersede any previous ones. But I'm going to move on, Mr. Chair. I'd like to clear up some things that were discussed earlier in regards to GMH. I mean, first of all, anyone from the administration can answer this. Does this new bill appropriate any additional money to GMH?
Senator, the funding levels for every department and agency, with the exception of DOA, DRT, the reprogramming of the $1 million to the judiciary, and the increase in the federal management, is the only thing that we touched.
So is that a no?
No.
All right. And then does, you mentioned earlier, Mr. Byrne, that there was a transfer of $2 million to GMH for differential pay from the CARES Act? It was clarified, out of the $117 million money?
I didn't mention it. But yes, it is being paid out of the CARES Act.
All right. And so that's not in this bill or our past substitute bill, is it?
No, Senator.
All right. So this bill has no additional money for GMH. And in fact, the bill that OFB put on the floor, the substitute bill, provided $700,000 more for GMH than in FY '20. And there was a spreadsheet that we received during our deliberations early on from BBMR that actually proposed that we cut 6.5 million from GMH's budget. But the budget that we passed, the subbill 282, kept GMH, that $700,000 additional from FY '20 intact. And I just wanted to clarify with you, Mr. Guerrero from OFB, if the, in either the governor's budget request or the hospital's budget request, did they request money for CIP in FY '21?
Senator, I'm not aware of any, any monies they actually requested for CIPs. I think they were under the impression that the law that was passed this year or actually last year that appropriated that $10 million originally to the hospital CIP, and then the law was again amended to transfer that appropriation to the hospital. So I believe because they were under that understanding, they did not request any funding for CIP in the budget request.
That's correct. There was no request from either of those parties for CIP funding in the, for the hospital for FY '21. And we are, as a legislator, trying to go out of our way to make sure that that $10 million can get there somehow for CIP. Because if it doesn't, there is no money allocated in this budget otherwise for CIP. And there was no request made for it. The governor's bill proposes, in regards to public health, to increase the local match, right? And by about 5.8 million. I completely agree with increasing the local match to maximize access to Medicaid funds, to federal funds. And I think we would be completely foolish not to do that in any way possible. So the only thing I think we're debating here is what way is the best way to do that, right? Because first of all, so as the bill that we're, we have in front of us, this new bill from the governor, does it propose that any of the 5.8 million go towards the operations or the services of public health? As it's written?
As it's written, no, it goes to the Medicaid match.
Medicaid, right? Okay. Because in the veto message, it was noted that frontline workers who may be in the process of being hired at public health may be in jeopardy. Yet, you know, we've confirmed with OFB, with public health, that, you know, several times, and even today, the director confirms that, that a reduction in staffing or furloughs is, is not going to happen. It's not in jeopardy. They are looking at services, yes, because they are short in their, they are short. There's no secret, and there's no disagreement. I think that they are short in their operations side. So, you know, we need to overcome that. But in an oversight hearing last week, they testified that they, at least 4 million in federal monies through the ELC grant going to be utilized to hire 80 to 90 additional staff for the pandemic. They are still waiting for the supplemental request that they've been approved for 3 million from that $117 CARES money. And that's also, you know, to help with tracing and environmental health and other frontline-serving divisions. I just think there's something wrong when we are asked to treat the Medicaid, the person in charge of Medicaid or the person who's, you know, the director of public health as if they're not telling us the truth or, you know, they're not, you know, I don't want to say it in a bad way, but that they're saying, that they're trying to tell us anything less than the truth. Or I'm just going to leave that at that. But so the, this, when OFB put again the subbill 282, the bill that we passed had 10.3 million more in MIP and 5.2 million more for Medicaid local match than the FY '20 budget bill. So it was a very clear effort to increase those, those matching funds so that we could access more. But it was still short, right? Compared to what we could access, right? The 131. So we put in a provision into that substitute bill. We amended it on the floor to use Medicaid or MIP lapses from this year, you know, for FY '21. And in the FY '20 budget, 3.6 was appropriated, 3.6 million was appropriated from Healthy Futures Fund for Medicaid local match. And the Healthy Futures Fund seems from the CREs to be tracking. Okay, it's not negative yet, still positive. That's one of the few funds, special funds, still positive. Healthy Futures, 3.6 million was appropriated. And according to public health, that's, they haven't used that part yet, the 3.6. In fact, they represented it to us on September 3rd that they have a possible 10.5 million in lapses for Medicaid. that they have a possible 10.5 million in lapses for Medicaid, CHIP, and EAP. 3.6 of that is from the Healthy Futures Fund. So at the very least, I would think the 3.6 is an easy one, right? That we can trust. They are telling us the truth unless the money was spent elsewhere. Why would it not lapse? What happened to it? Because, and that's what I wanted to ask you, you know, Mr. Guerrero, has OFB seen any documentation that the 3.6 appropriation to public health has been transferred or spent on some other purpose that was not specified in the law?
Senator, I'm not aware of any documentation that public health transfers such funds. We looked into the system, and the system still reflects that those funds are still there. Whether or not they're going to be utilized by the end of the fiscal year, I wouldn't know. The administration does have until the end of the fiscal year to expend those monies or at least encumber it before the authority expires. Now, if they're granted the extension through a provision that allows them to use the carryover, then they would be allowed to use it next fiscal year. But as far as this fiscal year is concerned, I believe if you don't encumber it or expend it by September 30th, then you tend to lose that money.
All right. But if we, but we put it in the bill, and I think it's still in there, that what they didn't spend in Medicaid in FY20 is going to carry over to meet the shortfall in FY21?
I do believe the amendment was made on the floor. It was passed, and it is incorporated into the bill.
All right. So they represented it to us that there was approximately 10 million in lapses. At the very least, I'm saying 3.8 is a reliable source. It's Healthy Futures, not tapped yet, and tracking well. So if I could just ask also, so again, you know, Mr. Guerrero, I've asked you this before, but the governor, I guess, is another option, right? If the lapses are not enough, is the transfer authority enough to cover the 5.8? The 5.8 million? Is that the correct number now? 5.8 million that they're saying they need to put at public health right now?
Based on the amount that's authorized in the proposed bill, Senator, if we're looking at transferring 5.8 million, I would say yes. For a transfer authority, it will be sufficient to cover the 5.8 million transfer into Medicaid.
Because there's approximately $27 million worth of transfer, isn't there?
You can say that, Senator, yes.
Can you say that instead of me? Okay. All right. And finally, on this first round, I just want to point out, you know, we're asked to, OFB's, the budget that the legislature passed and sent to the governor was proposing to cut $64.6 billion in expenditures from FY20. That was a 6% reduction. This bill that we have today is proposing that we only cut 5% that our spending, despite what we have gone through for the last six months, should equate up, you know, only 5% less than FY20. But the governor, in her testimony to the House Financial Committee, the House Financial Services Committee last week, testified that we may see a decline of 7.2% in FY21. And that doesn't match either of your predictions. So, but I do think 6% is a lot closer to 7.2% than 5% is. You know, if we have to make a cut to match the reality, I'm saying 6% is closer to the reality. And then just finally, you know, when it comes to optimism, you know, I think we are being very optimistic. And, you know, I pointed out earlier in my letter to the speaker asking for another session, for an override, that, you know, even TAF was predicted way above what GVB had predicted, right? They said 400,000 visitors, we're going to get this much income. But OFB, you know, took the liberty of adding $8 million more onto that, I think, or 5 million more. And so we were very optimistic, you know, more optimistic than GVB. We were also optimistic in corporate taxes because what you predicted is OFB, the bill we passed, said we were going to make $85.4 million in corporate taxes. In FY20, we predicted 85.05 in corporate income taxes. It shows we're predicting more than we predicted in FY20. And I know that, you know, Mr. Carlson has pointed out that the actuals for FY20 in corporate taxes, meaning how well these businesses did in 2019 tax year, and they're paying on it now in 20, FY20, they did very well. They did better than we had expected, and they paid more taxes. And that's great. But the reality is, I mean, we're being asked to accept that during the six months of PCOR I, III, II, and businesses being reduced, they're clamoring. They are saying, the business people are telling us that's not true. We're not going to make what we made in prior years. It's, that's too optimistic. We are hurting. And I don't want to say they're lying to us either. You know, they're the ones who are living that reality. So I just, I just think we've been very optimistic to predict the same for FY21 that we predicted in FY20, and that the new bill in front of us asks us to be even more optimistic and to predict $2 million more in that regard. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. We are now going to begin our second round, my colleagues. Five minutes, time does not include response. This will be our second round, last round. And floor amendments will not be entertained if they're not submitted in writing via session drive. Please, if you have any amendments, please prepare them now so we can move along. We'll begin with Senator Clint. Do you have any questions, sir?
Sure. Thank you, Mr. Chair. So my question is for Mr. Carlson from BBMR. So this budget is about 7 million more. Could you, I know you've kind of gone over it before, but maybe if you could just again explain where the seven, additional 7 million would be appropriated? And if there's any other, what are the major differences? You kind of went over it earlier, but if you could just reiterate, what are the major differences between this and the budget that we passed? So first would be the 7 million additional revenues. Where have those been appropriated to?
Thank you, Senator Vergel. $2 million increase in corporate income tax, $5 million increase in withholding taxes. That's the source of the 7 million.
Oh, no. My question is where is that 7 million being appropriated to?
Specifically, $750,000 and change to the Department of Administration, $465,000 and change to the Department of Revenue and Taxation, and $5.8 million and change into the Medicaid match program.
Now, were there any other areas that are different as far as between the budget bill that we passed and this proposed budget? In other words, did you shift money around from other agencies, fund them a little less, and fund other agencies a little more?
Yes, Senator. There was a shift from, by taking $1 million from GCC and transferring that to the judiciary.
Is that the only one?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Clint. Senator Will, do you have any questions? And you'll be followed by Senator Lee. Senator Will?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. Chairman, earlier today, I had the privilege of participating in a discussion that involved the Department of Labor. And in summary, I felt the highlight of that discussion was the anticipation of additional federal funds, monies that would get into the hands of working men and women who needed it the most, those whose work schedules were compromised, whether it was the hours or they were laid off. And this is great news, Mr. Chairman. I think it lends itself to supporting the governor's proposal in terms of an anticipated increase. These benefits I'm speaking specifically about are related to the federal pandemic unemployment compensation program. Somewhere in the ballpark of 924 million was approved by Congress. 509 is authorized for release, 321 million released thus far. And I need to make this statement, Mr. Chairman, for the record because, and forgive me if I'm wrong, someone could correct me, but I believe that there's, you know, it's safe to say that 10% of those monies find its way directly into the tax base. They go right into, you know, our cash flow and collection of those monies. But my point would be that as large of an infusion of capital as that may be into the economy, it's the same point I made earlier today and the same point I made in committee of the whole, and the same point I made on August 11th, that all of this is temporary, as it should be. Until such time, we revive our private sector. And so my question is related to this, Mr. Chairman. I had to set the context to underscore the fragility of this economy, especially again, as I mentioned, in PCOR I and in a protracted lockdown where there's just no business activity, at least not enough to hit the projections as I think they're proposing. So my question is this to anybody on the panel. Would the administration be open to a supplemental budget, assuming that all the economic indicators and the projections set forth in her proposal are met along the way? Tied to this, of course, may even be the governor's need to transfer funds to meet the requirements stipulated in her veto message. And the reason why I ask that question is I'm going back to FY12, Mr. Chairman. I'm just, as I'm listening to my colleagues, I'm going back in history and trying to pick pieces from the past that kind of fit this situation. And we saw that through the decades, ebbs and flows of the economy that was related to labor, employment, et cetera. And that's important because that affects the tax base. While they're considering and preparing to answer the question of a supplemental budget, I want to discourage my colleagues from making appropriations against a fund source that may not have the revenues to implement those appropriations. Those were the sentiments of then-Governor Eddie Baza Calvo in FY12. I also want to remind my colleagues that the administration has gone on to record to say that we are not in a cash crisis. I think the record of August 11th would reflect that, but I believe we are. And I believe we are because when you look at the revenues in GRT and withholding taxes since March, if you didn't think we were in a cash crisis then with those double-digit reductions controlling again for the federal infusion of cash, I really believe we're going to be in a cash crisis, Mr. Chairman. And so the point would be the danger of overprojecting on these revenues would leave us with liabilities that we can't meet down the road. And so again, I'd like to restate my question for the record, Mr. Chairman. Would the administration be open to a supplemental budget? Period. Would they be open to that? Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Mr. Carlson or Mr. Byrne, would you like to answer that?
Yes. Thank you, Senator Castro. Similar to fiscal realignment plan, if there was a need to come in because the bridge that Senator Castro is trying to bridge, build rather, was actually materialized. And there would be a requirement for us to come in and seek authorization to be able to take additional funds unaccounted for that you wanted to appropriate. But we'd have to be very cautious about how we did anything because it would have to occur at a point in time that the surety was there. You can't, you certainly couldn't do it in February because you still have, you know, several months left in the fiscal year. So look what happened to us this year. You know, we had a really good first four or five months of the year. And if it continued, we would all probably be sitting here looking at, you know, record numbers of revenue collections and certainly well above those that were adopted for operation. So I think that there just needs to be some, like, double, it's a double-edged sword, you know. It may be appropriate, but I'll remind the body that every year, speaking of Senator Marsh's comments about lapses, every year, we have to always reconcile certain obligations of the government of Guam, including the health insurance premiums. And I think we did $500,000 last year for the fire department in addition to about $4 or $5 million for the health insurance contract. So when we get to the end of the year is really the only time that we'll ever be able to understand after we clear the obligations of that fiscal year, whether or not a supplemental is even appropriate after we've extinguished, you know, all of the obligations. And by that time, we're probably well past the fiscal year anyways. So I can only, I can only see there, like, a fiscal realignment plan where we have to come back in and we have to redo the spending plan because revenues didn't come in. And it's clear to everyone here that we need to do a realignment plan. I don't, I don't think that a situation will occur anytime soon where a supplemental is requested or even entertained simply because it's going to take all the way until this time next year to understand where we exactly are, what, you know, GSA closes down, but they're still processing requisitions and purchase orders. And Medicaid is still processing claims. MIP has been exhausted already. We don't have any money in MIP. When the claims that are up at public health come down to DOA for payment, you'll see that we do have a backlog of claims. So maybe there, maybe at a point in time, there is some optimism that we are caught up. We're not caught up. We're far from it.
Senator Castro?
Yeah, thank you, Director Carlson. And I just want to close with this, Mr. Chair, that I think everything I've heard this round and the last just confirms to me that there's a disjointedness between the public health strategy and the fiscal strategy. We didn't even ask yet what this lockdown translates to in terms of lost revenues. And so I'm afraid that we're really going to miss the projections. We will find ourselves in a cash situation that we can't get out of if we adopt these projections. And if we're not, if we're not prepared, whether it's through the fiscal realignment plan or some other way, I think it's going to be darker days ahead. And so I just want to encourage the administration to try to connect the public health strategy with our economic revitalization strategy. Because every time we lock this place down, we don't realize the monies necessary to support essential services in the government. And I just don't feel comfortable, Mr. Chairman, supporting a budget, any kind of an increase that's dependent almost entirely on the infusion of federal monies. I think it can work. I think the argument can be put forward with just the FPUC revenues alone if it's true that 10% of 900 million is going to translate. That's 50 million. For me, when I did the numbers and I ran it on an average across the board from March forward, it might make it up. But what happens after that? What happens if someone reacts and we have six more lockdowns? And these monies are not in the pipe because the conservative Republican administration wants to revitalize local and state economies? And here we are, waiting for this money because it's here now and we anticipate it will come. So it's anybody's guess. And I think we're playing Russian roulette if we go about it that way. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Castro. Thank you, Senator Castro. Senator Lee?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. A previous speaker was asking, sorry, this question is directed to Mr. Carlson. A previous speaker was asking about where, where the additional funds between the S bill and the GOV's bill, where that money would go, where that money is being allocated. And so I wanted to ask, I wanted to ask you why. Why does the administration, why would the administration rather take this 7 million, have 7 million in higher appropriations instead of the 7 million in debt reduction?
First of all, thank you for the question, ma'am. We believe that we'd like to be able to, as stated by members of this body, do everything that we can to maximize the Medicaid match. We are also cognizant of, and maybe Mr. Byrne can actually articulate this, you know, better, of a, a funding shortfall in his department. And we, we, we think that the integral nature of, of the Department of Administration, along with that of the Department of Revenue and Taxation, require a different, I mean, you know, a revisit to their funding requirements. So like Senator Castro said, you know, we have to have the infrastructure, the people, the experience to be able to bill and then to collect, and then in Mr. Byrne's case, to make payments, balancing cash requirements, understanding, you know, paydays and all the other things that he has to plan for, along with vendor payments, you know, for appropriations that were passed either in this budget or in the upcoming budget. So we just believe that there, there is a shortfall. And I'll let Mr. Byrne give you some detailed information about what, what he believes he needs for his department.
Senator, I could start actually with DRT first because they're the revenue-raising department. And to restrict their ability to raise revenue, especially since we're talking about forecasting what the revenue will be, seems, seems to put them in a very awkward position, a difficult position. And it's kind of hard to understand why, why their ability to do so would, you know, would voluntarily be constrained. You know, we, they do, I mean, some of the, some of the comments that we had earlier about improved collections, basically, is because of their efforts. And the, I, I would want to add that improved corporate tax collections, I am sure, are because of their efforts. So to restrict their ability to do that seems to be paradoxical. As far as DOA is concerned, that there are, there are, I think, four, if, if I look at it from the top of the department, there are four senior people who I would have to not fund in order to make up the, to, to meet the budget that has been presented in this bill. Whereas, you know, we obviously want to direct money to first responders and to people who are involved in law enforcement and public health. They do rely upon DOA to pay them every week. They rely on DOA to pay those bills. They rely upon DOA to keep the wheels of the government going. And again, to, to restrict that, I think, is also paradoxical. I think that I heard at some time, and he may want to comment on this, that the director of the, of OFB said that he spoke to all agency directors about a restriction in their funding. I, I don't recall him speaking to me. And had he done so, I would have said to him what I just said to you at this moment.
Thank you, Director Byrne. I also, I'm really grateful for this, these notes on the revised bill that was provided to the body. And the very last bullet note reads, "Federal matching grants and aid for CAHA is corrected from $309,000 to $309,300 in the appropriations page for CAHA to balance the budget." Can you, do you have any comments with regard to that last bullet point? So you're saying the budget that was passed by this body was not balanced?
In the beginning or the front end where the revenues are, the, the amount was 309,300, but then when you go to the CAHA section, it, it was just 309,000 straight. We're just pointing that out. It's corrected in the, in the appropriation level, but, but the amount for the agency was short by the $300.
Okay. Mr. Chair, I'm not sure if the, in the committee of the whole process, if we'll allow this or if you'd like to bring them in or have them submit something in writing for our benefit. But there have been several statements made on the floor today with regard to public health. And so I'd just like to try to get them on the record with regard to what their needs are so we can kind of clarify that and, and make sure that we're all on the same sheet of music here. Because some members were stating that they're, they're good to go with what they have. Some members are, have mentioned that they've kind of been working with not enough for years, I mean, even decades now. And we've got to keep in mind that they were working with less resources and asked to respond to Dengue fever, to movement in their building from the fire in Mingilau and being spread out all over the place. And then now they are the lead for COVID. And so I just want to make sure that we're getting the proper response from public health to make sure that we're arming them as we move forward in, in the next phase of this pandemic and making sure that we are able to protect all of the people of Guam based on their public health strategy. So I'm not sure how you want to move forward with that or if the panel members have any updated information that they'd like to share from public health or if we could get a letter from them or some, something just to make sure that we're all on the same sheet of music with regard to public health's needs.
Mr. Carlson?
Yeah, Senator Lee, Mr. Byrne, and I would not be here if the governor didn't believe that there needs to be some assistance provided to public health. I'm not disputing what the acting director stated. I believe he's sincere. I believe he's mission-oriented. I just believe that he needs more resources. The governor also believes that, and that's why we're here today. The primary focus, as you mentioned, is to get more resources to public health. So I don't think we need to bring art down here. Edward and I wouldn't be here if there wasn't a quote-unquote "green light" to go advocate for this additional funding provided by the governor herself.
Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Yeah, I'm not disputing that either. I mean, many of the members of this body have been contacted by constituents or have personally had to wait multiple days. I mean, leading up to seven to even 10 days to receive a response or, you know, get a call back from folks once we were tested for COVID. So clearly, we have contact tracers and a number of frontliners that are just, they're overstretched. Their resources are, there's just not enough. It's very clear to me that there's just not enough. So, yeah, I would have to agree with that, that statement as well. Thank you, Mr. Chair. No more questions.
Thank you, Senator Lee. Senator Torres?
Yes, I wanted to just get a little more clarity on the increase, restoring the general fund levels for DOA and DRT. This would, would this enable you to preserve all the warm bodies or to, to provide enough warm bodies to service right now the, the immediate needs of the government with this heightened health crisis? So is it a preservation of positions? Or is it ensuring that there are adequate positions to, to man the mandates of, you know, to, to provide the manpower to accommodate the mandates that we have right now with the health crisis?
Thank you, Senator. I think part of the issue is that when this was measured, DOA in particular had a number of vacancies which were not counted as warm bodies. But nevertheless, the need for the position exists. I mean, there's, there's a, a GSA. I believe the CPO told me on Friday that there are some, I think she said, 61 bids that need to be processed. And we're looking at ways of doing that remotely and, and in a, in a more, more efficient electronic fashion. But they still have to be processed. And when those bids turn into actual invoices, those invoices have to be paid. So there's, there's a whole backlog of, of activities because we're having to deal with the unusual situation to which you referred and, and the additional number of people at public health and the additional, the addition to that of the number of people that public health really needs. As well, and so we have to, DOA has to be involved in processing the applications and getting them onboard, whether they're federal employees or whether they're local employees. DOA still has to process that application. So to, to summarize, there were some open jobs that were not contemplated by OFB when that amount was set. And those open jobs are needed to be filled in order that we can service to the best of our ability the line agencies and in particular, public health and the other front responder agencies.
Because what it sounds like to me is that this is not a nice-to-have, that this is actually a need, a critical need based on, and that's what I'm trying to reconcile. But, but basically, we always have this notion when we look at DRT as a return on investment. What is the return on investment for having added personnel? And a lot of times, I remember at a past public hearings, there was an actual equation that you give us one more revenue agent, for example, you will realize so much more in collections. There was always a corresponding return on that investment to employees. But I think what you're talking about right now is, is, in my assessment, it is what are you filling that is going to enable us to, to accomplish all the mandates, including the mandates of accounting with regard to the new positions that are funded through the CARES Act, you know, the, the reporting requirements to the federal government, et cetera, et cetera. Is that, is that an accurate take?
Yeah, yes, ma'am. That's more than accurate. I've, I'm not one to complain. I would try and use public money as efficiently and effectively as I can and make, make economic savings where I can. But I think we've come to the point where in order to do all these things that we've been talking about, you know, DOA needs buyers. It, it needs, we're, we're trying to set up as well an internal audit department because we're, because of all the money that's going through on the CARES Act money, you know, the, the funding that goes through there and the applicability of it. So we, we need those jobs. We need people in accounting to, to eventually process the, the POs. And in particular, we need people in payroll to pay the additional people that are being recruited, in particular, by public health. Yes, you're right, Senator. It's not a, it's not a wish. It's, it's turned into a need now.
And I just want to add too that you've been around long enough, clearly in the accounting practice and Mr. Carlson and the government, you've been around long enough that we can respect, I can respect, that you know what you're talking about and that, and that your service to the government is not out of political will but of true professional knowledge. And I, I think sometimes that's really what this comes down to. And I talked about the dilemma that we've had, the bantering back and forth over what is 1%, a 1% difference. And, but I think more than anything, we keep talking about these unprecedented times and it really boils down to what is the prerogative? And what is, what is the true, what is going to be prioritized at an immediate moment? You mentioned, there was also talk to Steve about what is ideal in a, in a budget. And it is that a budget is fluid. It's always fluid based on what the circumstances are, whether it's a natural disaster or another type of terroristic act that affects the economic drivers in our economy. We've seen all of those scenarios played out over the decades. But it really is about how we're gonna react to a situation with our, our budgetary will, whether we're gonna go prioritize one over another or whether we're gonna just rely on what is a standard. And I think right now that's, I think what's pulling at us is, do we, do we, do we just take certain measured risks at a time where it's calling on us to take those risks and to act, you know, with the best judgment? So I, I thank you for your, your candor. And, and I certainly can appreciate why you've sought fit to restore certain general fund levels with the governor's budget. It, it makes absolute sense. You put the men where the, where the, the reinforcement is most needed. And I think right now we're talking about administration, collection of revenues, accounting, and public health. And all else is really on us to be a law-abiding community, to just follow the rules and do the best for ourselves as well. Thank you very much.
Good, Senator.
Thank you. Senator Tellaro, do you have any questions, ma'am? Final round, my colleagues, for the remaining senators.
Situus, ma'am, Mr. Chair. You know, earlier, I don't, I'm not sure if it was mentioned exactly how this calculation came up, but OFB had a footnote on B that says, you know, with regards to public health, the matching grant in aid for $34,152,91. So I guess the question is really to BBMR or DOA. How did you come up with that $34 million?
My fat fingers earlier stated the match was 87.13 when it's actually 83.17. So I apologize for that. But when you take the local match number and you apply it with that ratio, then you come up with the number that we have. And we, I think we did things in a different manner. And maybe Steve can confirm or say, you know, or agree or disagree. But we assumed that the rate would stay the same. And that's how we went through the entirety of the, the projection for the match. We're not anticipating, as Mr. Byrne mentioned earlier, we'd love to see the 83.17 remain, but it may go, actually it's 89 because we're for the, yeah. It's 89.11 now. And I, I think Mr. Guerrero might have calculated that somewhat into his match, whereas us, we just decided to be very conservative. This is probably one of the only times that we're, we were like super-conservative and we used 83.17 for the entirety as opposed to bifurcating it. So there might be some difference in the application of the match. We just thought it would be appropriate to use the 83.17 because right now we're getting an additional 6%. But that, that's gonna, yeah, it's gonna end in December. So that, that's probably where any variation between our numbers occurs.
So Lester, what you're saying is...
The rate was either the current rate projected at three months and then changed, or we decided to just to be conservative like Mr. Guerrero and we stayed with 83.17. So we're not guessing. We're applying the federal match.
You said three months ago, three months ago, when you did the calculations on this, it was 89.11?
It's now 89.11.
Okay. Now it's 89.11, but three months ago, what was it then?
I think it started, that's when we first started to enjoy from COVID, a increase in the federal match. But I'm, I'm not saying that it's going to continue after December is my whole point.
Exactly, exactly. We're not sure. So Steve, what was your calculations on this?
Senator, when we came over the local match, we took, we took the ratio from the department. Their ratio, I believe, was 85 federal, 15 local. I will say this, Senator, in all my experience handling public health while I was at the Bureau of Budget, these ratios, they fluctuate every year. And it's really up to the federal, federal agencies to, they can implement whatever rate they want. At one time, Medicaid was 50/50. And it goes to 70/30. And it goes to 90/10. And it just, it just, I mean, we're basically at the mercy. Whatever rate they tell us is the rate we need to abide by. The only, the only problem that I would see here is that if we appropriate more local match, it's kind of like a safeguard because if they increase the federal dollars, then of course our local match is okay. But if they decrease the federal match and require more of a local match, then that's where we're going to run short because we would have to go find the difference. So that's basically how a lot of these federal programs, especially in public health, operate. Their funding rate, their funding ratios actually vary or can vary annually.
Okay. Thank you, Steve, for that. Thank you. And earlier, Steve, you were talking about the, you mentioned earlier about reviewing the preliminary figures for the month of August. And I think you mentioned something about it's tracking the way you anticipated based on your projections on this budget is, can you elaborate a little bit on that? How you're looking at this currently now and seeing a trend starting to happen?
Senator, what we did is we just kind of like went into the system and looked at what the system had recorded as of, I believe, two days ago. And we just took those numbers out of the system and kind of used, projected it for August. And, you know, what we discovered was that the trend for June and July was not the same in August. And we saw an actual decrease for the month of August. Please bear in mind that these numbers are out of the system. They, they are subject to adjustments before, you know, Bureau of Budget actually comes out to see our year report, granted. But, you know, those are the numbers that we extracted out of the system and those are the numbers we're just using to kind of help us project to the end of the year. So if we get the August, and of course, we only got one month left of September, we can see our accuracy really becomes a little bit better simply because we scale down the unknowns and we have more of actual data to work with. And that the only data now that would be pending for 2021 would be September, which that, again, we can probably do a good guesstimate based on what has happened the last couple of months. And that's, that's how, that was our discussion today.
Okay. Okay. Thank you so much, Steve, for that. Thank you, Mr. Chair. I have no more questions. And I wanted to thank the gentleman for being here today in case we have another supplemental budget op here too again.
Thank you, Senator. Senator Louise, do you have any questions, ma'am?
Yes, just really quickly. So please correct me if I'm wrong, that I, I found that the FPUK and the PUA employment benefits are not considered earned income for the purposes of the earned income tax credit, the EITC. Is that correct?
Yeah, that's my understanding.
Okay. And so therefore, can we expect then that the Guam's EITC obligations will be much lower for tax year 2020? And if so, do we have any idea how much lower?
That's a very difficult thing to measure because there are kind of steps in the whole process. There are bans. So somebody might be, have earned sufficient funds or money at the beginning of the year to qualify them for EITC, even though in the latter part of the year, they were unfortunate enough to have been laid off and receiving unemployment. But in general terms, you could assume that might be the case, but it's really, really difficult to predict because, because of those kinds of facts.
Okay, okay. Thank you. I'm still trying to wrap my head around that whole process too, but thank you again. Thank you for that explanation.
No further questions? All right. Senator Peter Thurlahey.
Mr. Chair, it's been like over two hours since I haven't spoken and, you know, my, my mask is choking me already, so I better talk. Mr. Chair, I just want to thank our colleague and the panel for the questions and the responses. And this kind of helped me to make my decision on whether or not to override or to support the, what the governor's asking for her consideration. But I just want to go right straight to the point because, you know, all the questions, the questions that is being asked to the panel has given me the insight of just trying to make my own decision. But even up to this point in time, I haven't really decided whether or not, how am I going to go on the voting? And at the end of the day, we're going to have to vote either to, to give that consideration to the governor or to override. And this is what I want to ask. I want to ask Mr. Carlson and, or Mr. Brim, whoever, Mr. Leongarrel. Mr. Carlson, at the end of the day and at the end of this dialogue, we're going to have to vote either way on your most trustful and honest opinion. Do you think that the consideration on what the governor's asking is in term with making it good and going forward with this? Or if we totally, if we totally, as members of the 2035 Guam Legislature would override, what would be the impact of whether or not if we approve the consideration or we totally disregard or override this bill? I just need your most honest opinion on, to direct me on just which way I'm going to go. Because all the question, and I appreciate all the questions because they're very fruitful for me. And I got to get not the total understanding of where I'm going to go. So I just want to ask you, Mr. Carlson, because for one, I am not, I am not a pro in budgeting. I am not a pro in financing. And I just want to make sure that I, I will make that right decision based on what your recommendation is. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Thurlahey. My most truthful and sincere response to you is that we are here because we believe what we're asking for is appropriate and necessary. Harkening back to Senator Torres's comments about why we need the increase in DOA and DRT coupled with the increase in match during a pandemic for public health strikes right at the heart of why we're here. If public health doesn't have the support from DOA, when they send batches of Medicaid and MIP bills down and other vendor payments, then the system is going to get choked again. And we don't want that. We want to be able to provide public service at the best possible ability, and that requires an authorization from this body for additional resources. And I will say that the 5.8 million of the seven is by far the lion's share of what it is that we're asking you to consider, and that's because of what it is that that money will do. It will make payments to Medicaid providers. It's going to go back into our community. It will keep people employed. It will provide medical services to those who need it. It will assist greatly in what the governor wants us to do, become healthy again, so then we can be prosperous again. Thank you, sir.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Thank you, Mr. Carlson. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Senator Thurlahey, for speaking. Senator Amanda, do you have any question, ma'am?
Thank you very much, Mr. Chair. Hello again, gentlemen. Thank you for being here. Earlier, Mr. Byrne, you were answering some questions about the positions that will be funded through the increase to your department and to the Department of Revenue and Tax. And you mentioned that these positions are needed because of the additional CARES Act spending that the government is doing, also the additional hires at the Department of Public Health and Social Services in response to COVID. And so I'm wondering if these positions can be funded through administrative costs allowed through the CARES Act funding? Has that been discussed?
Yes, thank you for asking that question, Senator. Unfortunately not. The CARES Act does not allow us to use funding for activities that are normal, normally budgeted by the, in state or in our, in our case, this territory. So we cannot transfer any cost to the CARES Act in order to fund these particular positions. And indeed, if we did so, it would divert some funds from the CARES Act funding, which is directed at specific COVID-related activities in the operating departments. So even if it were permissible, which it isn't, it might not be advisable.
Okay. Thank you very much. I appreciate your answer and I know you can understand where I'm coming from, trying to be creative in any way we can be to save the general fund revenues to, to put to other necessities in the government. So I appreciate that. Thank you, Mr. Byrne.
Thank you, Senator Shelton. Senator Perez, do you have any question?
Yes, thank you, Mr. Chair.
All right.
Okay, so I received information that in regards to the energy consumption of Guam, that from March through July, there was an 8% drop in utilities consumption that translated into 5.5 million reduction in the power bill. Do you think it's reasonable to use that savings towards the very things that are appropriated in the governor's bill? So you've outlined 750,968 for Department of Administration, 465,203 to Department of Revenue and Taxation, you know, 1 million to the judiciary without having to take it away from GCC. And then with the public health, in the language itself, it does not, does it state appropriation or what is the exact wording for that?
Senator, can I answer your first part and perhaps Mr. Carlson will answer the second part? I'm not sure where you get your numbers from, but certainly I've not seen anything like 5 million in savings in the, in the amounts of, if you're talking about power, I've not, I've not seen anything like that savings in the amounts that DOA is responsible for paying.
Yeah, this is based on a revenue report from GPA. And so in DOE itself, it was a little higher because students were not in school. But overall, it's, we're talking about an 8% drop, which equates to 5.5 million dollars. Do you think it's reasonable to use that money to go towards DPHSS? You know, during, during this pandemic, you know, we're, you know, we're stating, we know that the priority is there. You think it's reasonable to use that savings in power bills, at least power bills? You know, we haven't talked about water bills even or trash for that matter, right? But do you think it's reasonable to use that savings to go towards Department of Public Health and, and these other agencies that are specifically?
If, if the bulk of the savings are at DOE, I think you would have to be suggesting to me that we have to transfer money from DOE to the other, to public health in particular. Is that, is that what you think that should be done?
So what I'm hearing is the rationale is that we need to fund public health because we are in the middle of a pandemic. And if we are seeing, if we are seeing savings in utilities, should we not prioritize that savings to go towards these agencies that are listed in the amended bill?
Well, that would involve reducing the allotment to DOE.
Okay. And is that a reasonable thing?
Not really, because...
It's not reasonable to prioritize DPHSS?
No. Yes, of course it is, but you didn't ask me that. You asked me, is it reasonable to, to reduce the allotment to DOE, especially since?
Based on the energy cost? If you're not using energy, shouldn't that money be utilized for things that are needed immediately?
Especially since you're talking of a savings, and I haven't seen these numbers. And I certainly would like to look at those numbers before I agreed to any such suggestion. But that's what happened supposedly in fiscal '20, but we're talking about what's going to happen in fiscal '21. And as far as I know, GDOE is doing all that they can to go back to normal schooling. So in that circumstance, where would the savings be?
So I'm talking government-wide. This is not GDOE alone. So this is government-wide power savings. And so again, the question is, is it reasonable to prioritize the needs of Department of Public Health with the savings that we're seeing with these energy costs? Because as you can see, a lot of our agencies under PCOR were, you know, they're not reporting to work, they're not utilizing the energy, you're not using energy, they're not utilizing water, trash, you know, all of these things can add up. And apparently it's 5.5, 5.5 million dollars. So that, that in alone can fund what you're seeing, you know, at least a big portion of Department of Public Health. You know, I think that's reasonable to look at what we're saving in utility costs to go towards things that are much more needed and, you know, since we're not utilizing this.
Again, I haven't seen those numbers, Senator. But if you're talking about government-wide, that might include the hospital. I can't imagine that the hospital has reduced their...
We're talking the overall average. We're not talking specific agencies. This is the overall cumulative reduction in energy, just energy. We're not talking about water. We're not talking about...
Yeah, I really can't comment because I haven't seen those numbers.
But the question is, should we prioritize the savings to go towards Department of Public Health?
Public health, public health.
Judiciary, to DRT, DOA? Can we prioritize those savings to these agencies?
Can I answer now? Sorry. Public health requires funds. Certainly, we want to make sure that they get all the funds that they need. And in particular, as Mr. Carlson has been saying for the last few minutes, we want to make sure that we have enough funding to pay their operational costs, Medicaid to maximize the match, and MIP to fund the requirement to pay providers. Certainly, we want to make sure that we have enough funding to do that. In the, at the same time, we need enough funds to run the government. So both DRT and DOA are involved in revenue raising and revenue distribution, if you like to say. So if, if you want to look at it, that, you know, all we're, all we're trying to do, right, is to say next year, when we don't know... So if you want to look at it, you know, all we're trying to do, right, is to say next year, when we don't know, I would probably like to hope that we're not in PCOR I through the whole of next year. Next year, when things begin to return to normal and activities return to normal, that the utility costs will normalize. And these funds won't be available to pay for these costs that we're trying to pay for out of the budget that we're in front of you today.
That doesn't answer the question, but thank you for that response. The other question I have is the Payment Protection Plan. So we understand that that was extended to August. Has there been any type of analysis to see, you know, the impact that would have when it stops, when we start, stop seeing, I guess, the benefits from that? Is there any analysis done? I guess this question can go towards OFB and also to BBMR or Director Byrne?
Well, we'll start with BBMR. Steve, the director went out to get his jacket because he was getting cold up here. So maybe the administration can answer that. Senator Perez, first. Steve will be back in a couple of minutes. He just walked out of his car.
I don't have an answer for the Payment Protection Plan question, ma'am.
If you could just wait a couple of minutes, it will allow Steve to come back. Oh, you can answer it? Lou Ellen, okay, Lou Ellen there.
Yeah, we don't have any analysis as well. But I guess we're, how we fact in withholding, right? That's a factor we took in. BBMR is saying that they see a base of 20 million per month. And that's less PUA. But the other factor we're seeing probably why it's maintaining at 20 million is because there's still PPP, but we cannot get that figure. PPP is, there's about 2,000 businesses and employing about 14,000 employees. But again, we don't have that data. So that's why we're not, well, we said may affect the 20 million base. And our base is more like 92 million.
Okay, so basically, you're saying that there's no analysis as of this time after...
No, there's no data at this time.
After August or after the eight weeks?
No, because unlike the PUA, it's recorded in the system how much withholding comes from PUA. But again, that, for the PPP, that information is not available. I'm not too sure where to go.
All right, thank you. Should we wait for Steve to?
Steve?
Yes, Senator, you know, regarding the PPP, that's information we've been trying to obtain and get. It's been very difficult to get any numbers regarding the PPP. We can do our estimate. We know at least how much money is available. We know how many businesses are affected. We know how many employees are covered with the PPP. But what we don't know right now is how much money basically is being withheld for either withholding, you know, I believe there's an option that is provided to employees. They have the option either to take the withholding now. And I believe that that amount is about 10%. Or they can opt to file it later when they do the returns. But we don't have a number for PPP. But we know there is, there is, there will be, it will have an effect on collections and what actually basically is due and what we need to either subtract out of our numbers in the baseline.
Thank you for that response. So what is the timeline when we start to see a change happen? Like, when is the cutoff time when these businesses are not receiving this fund?
Yes, Senator, the way PPP works, my understanding is it depends when you're awarded the actual grant. And it also has, I believe, an eight-week period and I think, I believe, a 23-week period. Some of the conditions is that companies that are awarded this money are, some of the provision I've read is that you need to maintain your employees during the course of you having this money. And then I believe at the end of either the 23-week period, you can opt if you justify it accordingly and you meet all the mandates of the program. You can actually ask to have all that money. Actually, yeah, debt forgiveness of the total amount of the loan that you borrowed.
Right, thank you. So I think maybe perhaps this was mentioned earlier, but there was a interim inspector general's report regarding the CARES funding. And as of the time of this report, which I believe was August 24, 2020, Guam has spent 24%, 24.7% of the funds. And so there's different categories here. There is the payroll for public health. There's teleworking, medical expenses, public health expenses, distance learning, economic support. So I think, you know, it's important to know that, you know, what is the plan? I believe, you know, in the first parts of the discussion, we were promised a report, an updated report on the CARES funding. And I guess this, in a way, kind of substituted, but it doesn't really show a breakdown. And perhaps, you know, we talk about the pandemic, you know, being utmost priority. And so it would be important to see the updated budget in addition to perhaps the plan. I think, you know, we're all trying to work together. I think ultimately, we want to serve the needs of the community, right? We want to leverage as much of the federal dollars as much as possible, you know, cover all the shortfalls. I mean, that's, we're here for that reason. And I think ultimately, it's about, you know, getting that information so that we can work together to come out of this pandemic. Yeah, I think that's what's missing is really this, you know, collaboration, this true collaboration. And that's something I am interested in doing. And, you know, it's just a matter of really kind of understanding, you know, what's happening. And, you know, to see these numbers is not really supportive of, you know, some of the statements that were made earlier. And, you know, I just, you know, think that, you know, by withholding certain information, you know, we're not getting, you know, we're not working at the best way possible for it. But, you know, I see the needs, you know, what are the needs? And it's just a matter of working together. It's just some of the information is being withheld to really kind of get at, yeah, supporting the needs of the community to the best possible. But yeah, that's just why I want to point that out for the record, that this document exists and, you know, what is, you know, what can we do at this point to get this number up? And I understand that a lot of it has to do with processing on the DOE side and... But again, yeah, that's just a comment I wanted to make. Thank you.
That report covered what end date, ma'am?
It says it was revised August 24, 2020.
Correct, but I believe it covers only to the end of June?
It says July 23, 2020. So it's really...
It's a June report.
July 23?
No, the date of the report is July 23, correct.
It's the cost incurred through June 30.
Yes, so we've had all of July and August. So that report is extremely dated. We have done the Program and Salapi program. The GIA Business Loan Program is completed. As I mentioned earlier, we have a report that's due on the 21st. The budget is outlined there. The five categories that you went over are allocated. We have agencies with account numbers established for the specific amounts that we, the governor approved, subject to reimbursement requirements. We will release the reserves and the agency can access the money if it's on a reimbursable basis. I mentioned earlier that we are in the process of providing $2.4 million to the hospital. That wouldn't be reflected in your report because we just approved that today. So there's a lot of movement. That report is not indicative of what we have done over the last two months.
Thank you for that. Thank you.
Thank you, Senator Perez. Senator Jim, do you have any questions, sir?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Okay, we've been through this drill before, and thank you for the last round of questionings. And we tried to address this $7 million before, and it failed. It failed by 13 votes. And now the governor is coming back to us and saying 1% again, just 7 million. We tried that before, and it wasn't, the governor makes it appear like it's a small amount. Well, it wasn't a small amount then, and it's not a small amount now as we went through almost three weeks of battling why this is the best we can do and positioning ourselves, where can we get more money for these different agencies? And of this 7 million, I understand that 5.8 million is for the assistance is needed for Medicaid and MIP. And it's not for the operations. It's not for the operations. It's for the match that we're required to provide, 5.8 million. And I recall just last week, when the committee chair called the oversight hearing for Department of Public Health and Social Services, we learned of 6.1 million, if we want to consider personnel, 6.1 million for contact tracers. And that's good until 2022. That's federally funded money. DPHSS also stated, had the oversight just last week, that they received 22 million in federal funds, of which 6.1 was some of it to be used for the contact tracers and 1.2 for community health. And that was reported by Tommy Taitegui, the ASO. And they also, Mr. Taitegui, the ASO of Public Health, also said that so far of that 22 million, they've used 13.5%. So that leaves them with 86% more to spend of that 22 million dollars. That's a lot of money there. Again, Public Health is going to get the bulk of this 7 million, that 5.8, if it was approved. But yet, as earlier spoken by my colleague and the chairman of the committee of that department, the director agrees that those lapsed funds can be used for Medicaid and MIP to access the full federal Medicaid amount of 129 million for FY '21. And that was the sub-budget that was approved by 13 of my colleagues. And I got it in black and white. The committee chair was kind enough to write us all a memo to all our colleagues explaining that to us clearly. You know, in our sub-budget that we passed, it says Public Health must receive the lapsed funds. But yet, the governor is still asking for 1%, the 7 million. When the governor currently has, as Mr. Gero has stated, the transfer authority of 15%, roughly 27 or 30 million dollars authority to do that. That's a lot of money of her transfer authority. And I appreciate Mr. Burns expressing to us that, you know, it's just not Public Health that is needing this 7 million, though they get the bulk. But DOE also needs money, as he explained, for the purpose of supporting the agencies, $750,000. $750,000. And that DRT needs to collect more taxes. And so they could use $465,000. That's a total of 1.2 million. The governor has transfer authority of over $27 million. I'm sure the governor can find some place where to transfer that out. My suggestion is, how about Pacific Islands Development Bank or Hagana Redevelopment Plan? Those are nonessential compared to what I think DOE and DRT are essential. DOE and DRT are only asking for 1.2 million out of the $7 million we're discussing today. 5.8% is the biggest going to Public Health. So 7 million wasn't something small, as the governor is trying to explain to us today for, to do this budget. Because if it was, we would have passed that, but we didn't. It was 13 that said no. We're a separate branch of government. We're the checks and balances. We're not the rubber stamp. And that's why we had the ability to say no on this bill and to override the governor's veto and why 13 senators voted no initially to that 7 million. So, Mr. Gero, just, you know, we're on the final round. Once again, you heard more discussion on our second round to justify the increase possibly based on revenue projections. And I just got almost a Dear John email or a text message, not personally addressed, coming from the governor with the wonderful projections of retail and construction service as a result of military buildup spending. And during this period, we also expect to start seeing tourism start coming back. That's not going to fly with me. So, Mr. Gero, I'm just wondering, is there anything new on this second round that you feel you should change your mind? That's my question.
Are you referring to the bottom line revenue projection?
Yes, yes, sir. Thank you.
Again, you know, Senator, I will say this. I mean, we worked hard on coming up with these numbers. We used all the information available, possible. And I'm sure the Bureau of Budget will also concur that the data we use is almost similar, if not almost exact. The only difference we have here in terms of our numbers is just basically our interpretation or a projection of what's going to happen. The data is there. Where, you know, we use data to basically come up with estimates that we feel will be realistic. We feel that can be generated. We feel that this government can collect. And like I said, you know, I'm still very much comfortable with the numbers that we came out in the bill. The administration has their position on what they feel is going to happen. I have no qualms with what they're saying. But, you know, if you're asking me what my position is, I'd like to stick with my position because I feel comfortable with that number. And I can justify it to today. And many speakers have spoke today about the difference of being 0.001%. Well, you know, that can go either way. You know, I've always, my approach is the conservative way, and I've justified that time and time throughout all the sessions and the development of this bill. And my position is still the same. But I will not knock down what the administration is trying to say. I'm just telling you that based on our numbers, our justification, this is what we feel, we feel comfortable with. I think it's a conservative number. You know, I'm crossing my fingers. We hope, we collect at the rate that we've stated that we're going to collect in all categories. But if not, maybe some categories would be less than others. But I hope at least in the bottom line, the 775 will be realized. But I hope at least in the bottom line, the 775 will be realized.
Thank you, Mr. Gero. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Senator Morton. Madam Speaker, do you have any questions, ma'am? None? None? Okay. Senator Kelly, do you have any questions, ma'am?
Several. With the first one, I'd like to ask OFB, so Steve. Is the governor's budget bill that we received, is that balanced? The way that I read the notes is that there's an overappropriation. Can you discuss that?
Senator, as, as I mentioned in my opening statements, when you were asking me about what my assessment was on the review of the bill, I did indicate there were two areas of concern. One was the, the 5.8 million match plus that is going to Public Health. And then, of course, there's another amount of $81,603 that I noted that had to, that required an adjustment. So aside from the two, I, I would say that the bill is balanced. There was a comment made about the, the federal match of a $300 difference. Again, I would, I would just note that if you look under, I mean, in that portion of the budget, it says for information purposes only. But yes, it is part of the bottom line. Yes, it should be included, but it really doesn't affect the general fund or special fund appropriation side of the bill. But you're, if you're asking me, is the bill balanced? Aside from these two noted concerns, I would say these are the only areas we have discrepancies on.
Would that need an amendment? I mean, if it's not balanced, it's not balanced.
If, if, if the bill passes, I mean, if the bill should pass, it would require an amendment. If it doesn't, and we revert back to Bill 282, it will, it will not.
The next question is about explaining the difference between allocate and appropriate. So the 5.1, excuse me, 5.8 million for DPHSS, is that guaranteed to get to them? Or please explain the difference between allocate and appropriate.
When we, when we use the provision allocated in the budget, Senator, it's normed down on the sections after either section one or two of the department's budget. We refer to it as X amount of dollars is hereby allocated from the section above. In other words, whatever the total department's appropriation was, either from the general fund or special fund, that portion that we were referring to in that section is normally taken from the appropriation on that top part, on that part of the section. So nor, so what's, what's happening now is in the proposed bill, they're appropriating the 5.8 million to Public Health. But the way they did it, they, they just noted that it's allocated. They did not increase the appropriation portion of Public Health on the top.
So what would a concern of the difference terms be? I mean, if this is a public health focus, should we be wanting it to be appropriated? Is allocated a concern?
Well, if, if you don't make the adjustment and, and increase the appropriation at the top portion of Public Health, general fund portion, then first of all, the balance, the budget won't be balanced because we're, we're authorizing them to utilize 5.8 million of an appropriation of Public Health, which, which it's going to be 5.8 less right now. So they need to go up and increase it by 5.8, and then you enforce the provision that says that 5.8 will be allocated from the general fund appropriation to Public Health. If you leave it as is, you're going to assume that 5.8 is going to be taken from appropriation from Public Health, which does not include the 5.8. And then, of course, the bottom line, it will not balance because you'll be off by 5.8.
Okay, that's very concerning. We haven't actually talked much about FEMA. So, you know, with, with FEMA, what are the plans with FEMA? How much of that are we availing? Are we utilizing that much? Where's the matching funds coming from, if you could speak to that, DOA or BBMR?
Senator, in order to make a FEMA claim, the funds really have already to have been spent. So it really, you don't need to appropriate a matching amount. We have to identify the fund that's already spent before FEMA can reimburse us. So I know you're, you're referring to the 25-75 percent split.
Now, I believe FEMA is going to be matching some future payment with the Trump. So perhaps there's some exception to that? My understanding is, is it's 75% is going to come from the federal government and 25 from FEMA is going to be the match, but that hasn't been spent yet.
We, we don't know what the, you know, how much FEMA funds we're going to get. But as I said, we, we actually have to spend it first. Therefore, we have to have the appropriation. And hopefully, you know, most of the FEMA spending will relate to, or the FEMA reimbursement will relate to items that we've already spent in fiscal '20. I mean, there will be, I'm sure, some residual amounts in, in 2021. But as I say, in, in order to actually get the, the, the matching amount, you have to, you have to spend it. And that means we have to have it appropriated to be able to be spent.
We also haven't talked much or at all today about Section 30 money. Of the 65 million minus the war claims, how much is coming to Guam?
We have a budget number at 68.6 million. We received a letter, and the award was 65.1. We are disputing that amount because it is our collective recollection that there was a floor set of 68.6. And we believe that it is very clear in federal statute that we will get no less than 68.6. And when that, when that letter came from the Department of Interior, I immediately requested whether or not they, they followed the law and the format. And they basically said that they did. I haven't had a chance to reconcile and give them a formal response. But I still anticipate that we will prevail in this because if I, I'm, I can almost see it with Speaker Cruz before, two years ago, he put in 68.6. We got a little bit more. I think we got like 71, but he was perplexed because we were all of the opinion that regardless of what is taken for war claims, we will get a minimum of 68.6. So we are disputing that. And soon as we get a chance, we will send another more formal response to the Department of Interior, making our case for it, pulling out the statute and everything that we believe is applicable to our case.
Thank you for providing that explanation. So, you know, I'm just thinking in my mind, the 35.6 million, I believe it was announced right around the time or right after the budget bill. So, I mean, there could have been some discussion there about $6 million being needed. There's the 65, maybe 68.6 million dollars coming. You know, this is a whole lot of money added together with, and of course, there are restrictions to CARES Act money and FEMA. And so we've got over a couple hundred million dollars that are at the discretion, to a large degree, of the administration. And so it, it puzzles me with all of these opportunities, why for the umpteenth time, we are being asked to go out of our comfort zone as to projections for next year when there, there are projections that we've held to for a very long time. So, yeah. And I, I just would say also with the Manpower Fund, you know, we've talked about that million dollars, and we have good indication that it's coming. But I, I voted for it because, because it wouldn't disrupt operations, that it would provide additional training. And so if, if we take a million dollars from GCC, then that changes what our whole vote was about at that time. Our vote was, we think the 4.6 million dollars is coming. We're willing to take a chance on the 4.6 million dollars coming. But we know, we were guaranteed in a sense, that it wasn't really going to disrupt any operations because it was going to be for training programs. So this million dollars is now sitting differently with at least me, and I don't know about the other senators. So, you know, again, it gives me additional food for thought here. And I just wanted to point out some of the discussion earlier where we were saying there's an importance in having infrastructure, but then more recently, that, that infrastructure seemed to not be the priority. And, and that was in some of the discussion with one of the former senators. So I, I'm still working through that one as well, that the infrastructure is important and then therefore, yeah, it just seems like that should be a consistent thought. So I think those are the majority of my, my questions and concerns. But yes, as, as the third co-equal branch to be, have left out of two to three weeks of discussion, to be left out of any discussion or consideration with the 35.6 million going towards the hospital or towards Public Health along with the deficit, and then knowing that 65 million to 68 million are coming our way. Yeah, that gives me a lot to think about in going beyond my comfort zone and the calculations we've talked about for the last six weeks as to what are the real projections for next year and whether we should be optimistic, take a chance on them. I'm not sure the best way to phrase it, but, yep. This is to Mr. Chair.
Thank you, Senator Kelly. Senator Therese, and you're the last senator to speak. Thank you, ma'am.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. You know, OFB had told us during our budget deliberations that the bill as passed by the legislature might not have taken care of the additional $15 million increase in health insurance costs. Does this new bill take care of that $15 million additional health insurance costs? Does governor's new bill take care of that? No? They're saying no. Did, and it didn't reconcile the Section 30 shortfall, as, as my colleague pointed out. And it, and it technically doesn't appropriate Public Health or GMH for that matter. The 5.8 million that we're trying to allocate for Medicaid from Public Health's existing appropriation or its appropriation according to your bill or, or the legislature's bill, would that 5.8 million be needed prior to December 2020? Because you've, there is a significant appropriation for Medicaid in the bill that the governor vetoed. But this 5.8 million that we are in a battle lockdown here on, is that needed before December?
We have been consistent in asking for the $7 million. We are not deviating from where the $7 million comes from. There has been a change in, in what the governor has presented to the body, and it's specific to additional funding for Public Health.
For Medicaid?
Yes, ma'am.
Right. And I'm asking you, given the amount of appropriation for Medicaid, is this 5.8 million on top of that needed before December? Will it be spent? Will our Medicaid appropriation, if, if not increased by 5.8 million, will that be spent before December?
It won't be spent before December.
All right, because yes, you said earlier, of course, it's spent when claims come in and spent throughout the year. So the 5.8, I think we can anticipate, will not be spent prior to December. And the bill as passed by the legislature allowed for reexamining, based on your CERs, your actual collections, reexamining and increasing revenue projections at that time when we, when we, as the OFB chair describes, when we can get rid of some of the variables and we can be more confident. And it would cause no harm if that's all you're going to give to Public Health is 5.8 million, and they're going to use it for Medicaid only, then it's going to cause them no harm to give it to them in December when we can be more confident because they can't spend it all prior to December. And that is very clear, I think, from years and years of practice, if it's going to go to Medicaid only. But you know, one of my colleagues said they got a Dear John letter. Well, I've got a letter too, and apparently I'm the only one, but it was sent to all my colleagues, copied. And it says, Dear Senator Terlahi, my veto of Bill 282-35 and submission of Bill 13-S in its place was done for one purpose only, to save lives. As chairwoman of the Committee on Health, you don't need to be reminded of your ethical, fiduciary and moral responsibility to ensure that critical health functions receive adequate funding amidst a global pandemic. To do otherwise needlessly jeopardizes the most vulnerable among us, and I know you would never do that. You will note that of the $7 million revenue adjustment contained in my budget proposal, the lion's share is committed to Medicaid, a program whose sole function is to provide healthcare to the poor. Bill 1 will give additional funding to the Department of Public Health and Social Services so these dedicated public servants can continue their tireless work to identify and isolate COVID-positive cases, prevent further spread of the virus, treat other illnesses and protect the health and safety of our island. Bill 1 will give Guam Memorial Hospital additional revenues from Medicaid. Bill 1 also acknowledges the importance of the judiciary as a separate but co-equal branch of government. Unfortunately, instead of joining in this well-intentioned effort, some politicians have chosen to grandstand. And I'm assuming because I'm the only one who received this letter, they're probably thinking I'm the one that's grandstanding. Anyways, it continues on and says, to accomplish this adjustment, Bill 1 increases the corporate income tax by $2 million and the withholding tax by $5 million, which gives us a total increase of $7 million. This was not achieved through fiscal magic. These numbers are achievable because our collections come from corporate income taxes and withholding taxes have already exceeded the budgeted numbers for this fiscal year. Senator, I am asking you to please be open-minded. Reconsider your fight to override my veto and let us together give our heroes the critical resources they need to win the war against this invisible vicious enemy that has affected so many lives. You know, and I'm going to read this out loud because I'm going to admit, this thing is silly to me, you know? $7 million, we're talking about, you're going to accuse me of not following, that I need to be reminded of my ethical, fiduciary and moral responsibility for healthcare? I want to know if we have a moral, fiduciary duty for healthcare. Where in the world is the $10 million? Why didn't that get to GMH before the crisis so they could have fixed their roof? Why didn't Public Health get the lion's share of the $117 million? Why only now, one week ago, did they get confirmed? Why only now, one week ago, did they get confirmed 3 million extra? You know, they're struggling. Why haven't you taken care of them with all of the federal money? They even have pledged to them federal money. Let's help them get it done. I'm not even invited to the Physicians Advisory Group meetings. In fact, I've asked and they said, no, I'm not allowed to attend. This pandemic, this emergency's been going on for six months now. Six months, you know? And I don't think this is the time to let everybody fall apart and start accusing each other of, what? Not taking care of public health? Where were you guys when I was trying to convince my colleagues, why not give public health every dime of additional revenues that we actually do collect? You weren't even bothered to show up. When public health was here telling us, yes, of course we need money, and of course we know they need money. And that's why we try to do everything we can. I tried to make an amendment to this bill, to the bill we passed, to say, anything collected by December is going to go to public health. Well, there was no one here to help me to convince my colleagues to actually give collected revenues and not revenues that no one was comfortable at that time. Just one more minute, Mr. Chair. It's just, we funded, the governor's bill funds directors that were never funded before, funds deputy directors and agencies that are not as critical as public health. I just cannot understand why we're going to, you know, result, we're going to resort to, what, calling names now? Is that what we're going to do to get this 7 million dollars? I think we have given the governor some very reasonable options. Public health swears there are lapses, so let them get the lapses. It will be more than what you're trying to give them right now because this bill doesn't appropriate any more additional money to public health. We've also allowed you to transfer. You guys were allowed to, you guys found 11 million to pay war claims. You won't tell us from where, but you found it. I have all faith that you can find 5 million dollars. You found money to pay deputy directors that weren't even budgeted. I'm just saying, Mr. Chair, so we've given her options. She's got, she can reduce expenditures. She can transfer seven, up to 27 million to public health. We can honor the lapses, the law that says honor the lapses, and let public health keep their lapses and spend those lapses on Medicaid and operations. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you. That ends the round. I'd like to thank the panel for being here. Thank you, Mr. Carlson, Mr. Burns, the passion, I think, in all the senators. It's not intended to, it's not to anybody personally. This is just the passion, and I feel the same way. Thank you, Steve Llewellyn. We'll take a quick recess and then we will go back in. I'd like to advise my colleagues. We'll take a quick recess.
I'm in at 3:55. Back from recess at this time, I will call Assistant Majority Leader, Senator Kelly March. I'm sorry. Let me start with Senator Sinagastin first. Senator Sinagastin.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. I wish to report back to the body that Bill Number 1, 3-S, Princess 3-S, was deliberated in the Committee of the Whole with a recommendation to place on the third reading file and that we vote without engrossment.
On that motion to place Bill 13-S on the third reading file, are there any objections? Seeing or hearing none, motion carries. Senator Therese?
Thank you, Madam Speaker. The bill is flawed. It was intended to give money to public health, but it doesn't give an additional dime to public health. And I think we should just, I would move to adjourn, Madam Speaker.
Senator?
There's no use passing a bill.
Is that a motion, Senator?
Yes, I am moving to adjourn because there's no use passing a bill that's going to just give a false promise if it can pass. that's going to just give a false promise if it can pass.
Colleagues, we're going to counsel with legal counsel at this time. I'm going to take a moment to recess. Imena Trenta Sincuna, Lieutenant Turen Gohan is back from recess. Colleagues, after consulting with legal, Senator Turela, I will call your motion out of order. A motion was made. We are in the third reading file on Bill 1, 3- S. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Senator Castro.
This point of order, Madam Speaker. I'm going to accept your ruling, but you had not declared us in third reading. That's why I made my motion. And I said notwithstanding the rules. Thank you.
And again, I will call you out of order. A motion was made and accepted. Madam Clerk, roll call, please.
Senator Castro.
Senator Lee, do you have a point of order?
Dispense them, Madam Speaker. Just a motion to excuse members not present.
On that motion, thank you, Senator Lee. Hearing or seeing no objections, motion carries. Madam Clerk, please proceed.
Senator Castro?
Pass.
Senator Castro, pass. Senator Lee?
Pass.
Senator Lee, pass. Senator Marsh Titino? Senator Marsh Titino, nay. Senator Moylan? Senator Moylan, nay. Senator Munya? Senator Munya, nay. Speaker Munya Barnes?
Again.
Speaker Munya Barnes, aye. Vice Speaker Nelson? Vice Speaker Nelson, excuse. Senator Perez?
Aye.
Senator Perez, nay. Senator Regel?
Aye.
Senator Regel, nay. Senator San Augustine?
Aye. Sorry, that was aye.
I'm sorry. Correction. Senator Regel, aye. Senator San Augustine? Senator San Augustine, nay. Senator Shelton? Senator Shelton, pass. Senator Tidegui? Senator Tidegui, nay. Senator Pedro Turela? Senator Pedro Turela, pass. Senator Therese Turela?
Aye.
Senator Therese Turela, nay. Senator Torres? Senator Torres, pass. Senator Castro?
Pass.
Senator Castro, pass. Senator Lee?
Again.
Senator Lee, aye. Senator Shelton? Senator Shelton, aye. Senator Pedro Turela? Senator Pedro Turela, aye. Senator Torres? Senator Torres, pass. Senator Castro?
No.
Senator Castro, nay. Senator Torres, aye.
Bill Number 1, 3- S received six ayes, eight nays, and one excused absence. Bill Number 1, 3-S failed by this body. Colleagues? Assistant Majority Leader on the motion to adjourn, please. I do apologize, colleagues. We are now on extension of remarks. Anyone wishing to speak on extension of remarks briefly? If not, on the motion to adjourn... Senator Therese Turela, you are recognized.
Thank you, Madam Speaker. All I want to ask is, with utmost respect, if we could be called into a regular session so that we can at least consider an override. Because as you have declared today's proceedings an emergency, if this is an emergency, it's a budget bill, then our other budget bill is an equal emergency. And so I believe you have that equal authority to do that. Thank you, Madam Speaker.
Thank you. Anyone else on extension of remarks? If not, Senator Marsh Titino, please move us for adjournment.
If I may, I apologize. I was debating for a long time about giving an extension of remarks, but if I could just give a brief one. And then...
Senator Marsh Titino, I will allow you a very brief extension, please. I asked if everybody wanted to speak. I will allow you that as the Assistant Majority Leader.
You know, as we've gone through these processes over months, three, four months, the last three weeks, 10 hours a day or so longer, really, because we're doing our office work outside of that. And we've all thought long and hard about each and every one of our agency's budgets and the whole fiscal landscape and the health of everybody. And at times, I felt like I would give my right arm to be able to solve some of our issues, to be able to give more to our agencies. And yet, you know, the fiscal realities are harsh. And it was really difficult in a time where we say that we should be working together. It just didn't happen. We were there alone in our committee work. And then these messages were sent out after the budget bill about $35.6 million with no consideration for the hospital or whether it could be used for public health. There were options there. And then just some of the press releases, the terms that were used. I just, you know, we say that we're working together. We're saying that we should be working together. And yet, this body has had to do a lot alone, except for at the last minute to deal with a bill that just wasn't something we worked on altogether. I want to be able to look all of our agencies in the eye if we do get more money, to be able to give them more. But I don't want to have to look any of them in the eye and say that we hoped for more than we could achieve. And the cutting we did earlier is not going to be enough, and we have to cut more. So I don't know. It's all very difficult. But I know that for many, if not all of us in this body, that we wanted to work together. And that was our guiding principle, at least in a lot of ways. So with that, suggest Masi, Madam Speaker, for letting me share some of that. And with that, Madam Speaker, I move to adjourn this session, subject to the call of the Speaker.
On that motion, hearing or seeing no objections, motion carries.